And good evening and welcome, thank you, to a W A T D political forum. Tonight's race features the Democrats running for Plymouth County Commissioner. I'm Christine James, your moderator, along with Monday Night Talk host Kevin Tachi, and our own Charles Mathewson asking questions. There are two open seats as current Commissioner Dan Pallotta is not running for reelection, and Commissioner Greg Hanley is running. We've got the candidates here in studio. We've got Greg Hanley, Jack Reardon, Carlos De Silva, and Mike Bradley all here in studio to ask questions. And we want to thank our media partners, PAC TV here, for joining us tonight. Always great to see all you folks. Got Larry Nelson, our engineer, here to my right, and over in the corner, the lovely Amy Leonard. She's the serious person here because she times you, and she will tell you how long you have. You either have a minute with the green, 10 seconds with the yellow, or red means stop. And as I told you earlier, when it gets to red, you get like a five-second grace period. And if you keep talking, I'm gonna hold this up to the mic, then you get that. And if you keep talking after that, then we cut your mic. We've rarely had to do that, but we will sometimes. Now, our format is simple. We've asked the candidates to have opening and closing statements prepared tonight. The opening statement can be two minutes or shorter, and the closing statement is one minute. We ask candidates a round of questions. They have one minute to answer. The lightning round is next. The favorite part here for all of us as reporters, because the answers are either yes or no, or one or two sentences. And when we say yes or no, it's yes or no. It's not yes or no with an explanation, yes or no with a soliloquy, et cetera. It's yes or no. We love it because nobody running for office can frankly do it. And then, one or two sentences tops. That's not a run-on sentence, that's not comma, et cetera. That's one or two sentences. Now, we chose opening and closing order out of the stand-in official W A T D newsroom koozie. The old one disappeared, as you've been hearing at the end of the last political season. Please return it, no questions asked. So, the order is Carlos De Silva, Greg Hanley, Jack Reardon, and Mike Bradley. That order will be reversed at the end. So let's say good evening again to the Democrats running for county commissioner, and let's start with the opening statement from Carlos De Silva.
Good evening, citizens of Plymouth County. Thank you, W A T D, for hosting us this evening. My name is Carlos De Silva. I was born in a small city in the Brazilian countryside, one of nine children of public servants. At eighteen, I came to the West alone and without knowing the language. Before long, I was lucky enough to meet my wife Rita, who was born and raised in Quincy. We married and adopted two beautiful babies from Brazil. Family is everything to me. One of my passions, passions, is to be involved with the community, and I would be honored to serve the citizens of Plymouth County as your next commissioner. I am an state auditor with the Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development. I also have experience in contract negotiations, business development, facilities operations, and budgeting. As mentioned, equally important to me is my community involvement. I am vice chair of the Hingham School Committee. I was elected in 2016 and reelected in 2019. Recently, I was elected as a member of the Massachusetts Democratic State Committee. I am a trustee of the Hingham Sons and Daughters of Italy and a member of the Brockton Area N E W A C P. With my broad experience, I have unique insight into how the county can foster more profitable and new partnership. The commissions have fallen short in servicing the population, and I see three areas that needs improvement: fiscal accountability, transparency, and youth engagement. I hope to expand on my three points. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was the opening statement from Carlos De Silva, and now we're gonna move on to Greg Hanley.
Thank you, Christine, and thank you to W A T D and PAC TV for hosting this forum. It's always a pleasure to come and speak on behalf of the county and the residents. My name is Greg Hanley. I am the current county commissioner. I've served in that capacity for the last eight years. The day that I came into office, the county was in debt close to $64 million. And we want to talk about fiscal accountability and stability. I'm proud of the record that we've assembled as a team down in Plymouth County, starting with Treasurer Tom O'Brien and my colleagues, Dan Pallotta and Sandra Wright, as well as the Register of Deeds. We have a great team in John Buckley. As you know, part of the revenue from the county is derived from monies collected at the Registry of Deeds, and the modernization of the registry in the last eight years has allowed for easy transactions at the county, which converts into dollars and cents for the county. It's a pleasure for me to be here. I look forward to a robust debate amongst my colleagues in government here, and I wish everyone well tonight in the W A T D debate.
Thank you very much. That was Greg Hanley. Now, let's go to opening statement from Jack Reardon.
Thank you, Christine, and thank you for hosting this in W A T D this evening. I'm Jack Reardon. I'm a candidate for Plymouth County Commissioner, and I say that I'm the good government candidate. I have some proposals for Plymouth County Government. Number one, transparency. The county commissioners should audio and video record their meetings, and that hasn't been done for the last eight years. The taxpayers have a right to know what is going on with their tax dollars and what's going on in county commissioner meetings. Number two proposal. When I was a county commissioner, I led the way for adoption of a code of ethics that was never revoked. It's very simple. People who are elected officials and county commissioners should not take political contributions from people who do business with the county. Number three, it concerns clean water. Clean water and aquifers in Plymouth County transcend towns. They don't stop at the town line. There is no regional entity that serves and studies clean water and preserves the aquifers in Plymouth County. I propose that the county is the proper vehicle and the best vehicle to preserve clean water and preserve the aquifers in Plymouth County. Now, a little bit about my background. I live in Marshfield. I was born in Brockton, and I was raised in Brockton. I'm a practicing attorney in Brockton. I'm one of the few Spanish-speaking attorneys in Brockton. I'm a former lieutenant commander of the United States Navy Reserve, and I'm also one of the co-founders and former president of the Brockton Boys and Girls Club. I'm a father of two teenage sons. I've spent the last 10 years being a father, a coach, a football coach, on the Board of Directors of Marshfield Youth Football. In 2017, I was awarded a recipient of the Massachusetts Bar Association Community Service Award for the Mochila Project in activity in the Brockton Boys and Girls Club. Mochila Project is to bring backpacks and coats to children living under the poverty level in the city of Brockton. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That was the opening statement from Jack Reardon. Now, let's go to candidate Mike Bradley.
Thank you, Christine. W A T D panel members and colleagues. My name is Michael Bradley. I'm running for Plymouth County Commissioner, currently in my second term as Chair of the Marshfield Board of Selectmen. I'm also Chair of the Plymouth County Advisory Board, which is a legislative body that oversees county government. Prior to my time in local government, I was an officer and lieutenant with the Plymouth County Sheriff's Department, a prosecutor with the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office, executive director of a statewide crime task force run out of the governor's office, and also own a small law practice on the South Shore. I'm proud of the work we've accomplished over the last six years, working on important community issues like the battle against opioid addiction, working on our critical infrastructure and public safety, working on union issues, healthcare, veteran services. I'm very proud of a veteran service project that I spearheaded with a company called Neighbor Works to come into town, take an old historic building, restore that historic value, and also make it a home for homeless veterans. In addition to that, we work heavily on the budget. We have $103 million budget this year. As anybody knows, the COVID emergency has forced us to adapt rapidly to the loss of revenue. As such, we cut $1.9 million out of that budget and proud to say we did so without resorting to layoffs. I plan to bring a measured, experienced approach to county government, one that highlights what the county does, which is essentially regional services, and regional services make more sense now than ever. There are programs and initiatives at the county level that every member community can participate in because you're already paying. Some of these programs are the 4-H program, municipal bulk purchase, various other programs that can and should be expanded, but the most recent program is the COVID reimbursement funds. And as Chair of the Advisory Board, I was happy to be a part of the team that put that together. I can personally attest that Marshfield received $1.25 million in a two-week timeframe. We got that money from the commissioners. If we had not received that money, we would have had to resort to another wave of layoffs, another wave of cuts, which would have likely involved layoffs. So the county does a lot. It can do more. I want to expand it so that we can help our community.
Thank you very much. That was Mike Bradley with his opening statement. Now, let's go and ask questions, and I'll start with Kevin Tachi, the host of Monday Night Talk. Questions for the candidates.
Start with Mr. Hanley. Mr. Hanley, talk to us about what you've done during your time as Commissioner. This most recent term that you've had, talk about some of the things that you've done, and why you want to have another term, and some of the things you'd like to do with another term.
As I said in my opening statement, you know, the county was in debt about $64 million. Today, I'm proud to announce that we're close to about $17 million, and that is through a myriad of partnerships that we've had to solve some of the problems of the county. Number one, the maintenance of effort, if you're familiar with that, it has to do with the liability that was left by the state on the legacy costs of the retirees when the state took over the jail. We were able to cobble together an alliance of folks statewide that were all counties, and we lobbied our respective delegations to reduce that debt. The result of it was the monies taken in by the Registry of Deeds are now set aside from Plymouth County to reduce that debt. It used to go right into the state coffers, but the state has set aside that money, and that was to the tune of about $33 million. That was one of the early victories that we had in the county. Well, I'm getting the red sign already, but that's okay.
Thank you.
Just, I'll give you a quick 30-second follow-up. So what would you like to do if you reelected?
Well, if I get reelected, I'd just like to reduce the county debt down to zero. That's my goal.
Okay. Mr. Reardon, during your time as Commissioner, there were always spirited meetings. I loved attending those. I'm sure Charlie did as well. There's always one particular Commissioner that you love sparring with regularly. If elected, would we see the return of the feisty Jack? And what types of issues and situations would you be most engaged in? I think you kind of outlined a few of them during your opening statement, but what else would you like, other things that we would see you get energized about?
I'd like to talk about clean water and go discuss that a little bit more. As I mentioned earlier, aquifers don't stop at the town line. They not only transcends towns and transcends counties, what one town does with its development and building affects the other towns, the aquifers. Aquifers need to be clean. We have limited water in Plymouth County. We have some great entities in Plymouth County that address water, but there does not exist any entity that encompasses the whole county and also is in tandem with other counties around it. As growth continues on in Plymouth County, I feel that the Plymouth County Government is the perfect vehicle to address these issues and network with other counties, such as Bristol and Bonstable, to address clean water. That's one of the predominant thrusts that I think county government should be looking forward into the future.
You didn't really answer the question, though. You talked about we're gonna see some of this action at these county commissioner meetings. Isn't that what you wanted to know? That feistiness?
I can never be accountable for my fellow commissioners that I served with.
Okay.
Mr. Bradley, during your opening statement, you professed a vast amount of experience. Why run for the county commission and not for a higher office?
That's a good question. I am entrenched in Marshfield and in the county, and I say that because for the last several years, I've been Chairman of the County Advisory Board. So it seems like a natural segue for me. I'm involved in the budget, and I'm involved in what I would call a level of fiscal responsibility and transparency that does exist in conjunction with the commissioners. I'm fully aware of what's going on now. I'm aware of some programs that are working, some I think that need expansion. And to answer your question as why, I'm already doing the work, and I think it's a natural segue for me to move from selectman to commissioner.
Carlos, Carlos, we see you everywhere. Not to say I don't see everybody else, but I see you everywhere. Talk to me about your experience and why you want to be a county commissioner. What is it about being a county commissioner that...
So, Kevin, I believe that, you know, when you run for office, you have to have one major goal in life. You have to be a true public servant. I am a public servant by day. I'm a state auditor, have been with the Commonwealth for the last decade, and I'm a municipal special employee in the town of Hingham, serving on the school committee. I pledge to the voters that I would serve two terms and serve well. I have kept my promise. I have actually brought my fellow school committee members to the State House to lobby not just the legislatures, but also the treasure of the Commonwealth when we applied for MSBA money for foster school. No one was talking about school, and I did that. I have great relationships across the state with elected officials. I am sitting on the Mass State Committee. By enjoying that relationship, I believe that the county commissioners could use someone like myself. I'm running because I know that I can do a fabulous job for the communities of all.
Thank you. It's tough keeping it to a minute, isn't it? Yeah, that's why we do that. All right. Let's go now. Charles Mathewson, questions?
I have a question for the three challengers. We could have two new members of a three-person board. What would you like to change? What would you like to keep? Let's start with Carlos De Silva.
Most important thing as a public servant is to have the skills of listening. I believe I would change that because the commissions currently don't listen to the community much. One area is the farmers, preserving the farm. The other one is the woodlot. You know, the community is speaking loud and clear. We need to afford them a hearing and listen to them. So I would change that. I would open the chain of communication with the community and make sure that before we make a decision, that citizens participate fully in our decision.
And what would you keep?
I would keep the fact that county government. I truly believe in county government. So I would keep county government, although many have talked in the past of eliminating it. I believe that we have to enhance the programs. You know, part of my three points, the fiscal accountability, I want to have disciplined guidelines and consistent independent audits, so funds are spent efficiently. I want the meetings to be truly publicized, videotaped, and broadcasted in 27 municipalities. I wanted to start a program, an internship program, where we bring in the youth and partner with local businesses and colleges to identify untapped grant revenues to help senior get more money, and also the homelessness brought in throughout Plymouth County.
Mike Bradley, what would you change and what would you keep?
So I think, again, I'd keep the level of fiscal responsibility and accountability that we have there. I would keep the strong relationship between the Advisory Board and the county commissioners. And one of the things I'd change is there's always room for expansion on our community outreach, and I think the more buy-in we get from other communities, the more buy-in they get for the county. Those are just some of the things that I would change. Did that answer your question? All right.
Jack Reardon, I have to look around this camera here. What would you change and what would you keep on the county commissioner?
I believe one of the unsung heroes of county government is the 4-H program, where it serves hundreds and hundreds of children and people in the community, whether it be beekeeping or whether it be involvement with animals and horses and other animals. It's a great program. It is loved and cherished by many people and children in the community. I believe that program should continue to be expanded, and it should continue to be expanded with UMass Amherst Agricultural. The Registry of Deeds, of course, we keep that. That's a great, well-run facility by John Buckley. That should be kept. One of the newer programs, as I mentioned earlier, we need a clean water commission. We need to make that a major program. Those are three of them.
Greg Hanley, you've worked with Chairman Dan Pallotta, who is a force of nature, a major force of nature. Dan, I know you're listening. He's been a very strong chairman, and he's not running for reelection. Personally, what would you change and what would you keep?
What in comparison to Dan's reign?
Yes.
Well, first of all, can I just say Chairman Pallotta is an unbelievable public servant. He doesn't get the credit that he deserves. He has a public persona, and he has a private persona, and behind the scenes, he is really the architect of most of the good of Plymouth County. So I will miss his leadership. I've learned a lot from him as well. I think, to the point of the panelists here today, I think bringing the public to our meetings, everyone's always available to come, but I would, much like we have at Quincy College, where I'm on the Board of Governors, we have a forum where, in the beginning of the meeting, we allow the public commander to make comments. If it's something that is a concern of this panel, I'm assuming it's a concern of folks in the county. So hearing that, I would open that up if I were lucky enough to get reelected and become Chairman. So that's what I would change in terms of...
Okay. I'm gonna give you a modified question, which I've been asking. I'll be at W A T D this October 30 years, and I've gone through a lot of these panels with county commissioners, and, you know, every time there's an election, I usually ask you something along the lines of what is it that you guys do? So a lot of this is inside baseball, unless people are really connected in with political, with local political parties and know what happens. So I'd like each one of you, in one minute, to give me your job description of what a county commissioner does. Let's start with Mike Bradley.
So as I mentioned in my opening, that the county's essentially regional services. And one thing you hit on is a lot of people don't know about the services we offer. So the one thing I think, as my campaign has been progressing, is I'm making people aware of the services the county offers. So in effort to do that, I've elected a county commissioner, will work with each municipality, their elected officials, and our regional elected officials to bring more attention to the good the county can do.
So that would be your job description of what a county commissioner does?
Yes.
Greg Hanley, what does a county commissioner do?
Well, it has evolved since I've been Commissioner. We are woefully underfunded by the state. We get 10.4, I don't know, Dan knows the numbers better than I, but close to 10% of every dollar transacted at the Registry of Deeds comes back to the county. The other 90% goes to the state. We, out of necessity, have had to create programming that generates revenue streams for the county outside of assessment. So each community gets assessed a certain percentage based on the valuation of their property, and I think the dollar amount per citizen is about $1.79 per person to get the services of the county. Out of necessity, we've had to create revenue streams to allow us to expand on programming. For example, if you look at the vehicle bid, that is something that the county generates, that generates revenue for the county beyond taxation, beyond assessment, beyond our ability to collect money from the Registry of Deeds.
It's tough, isn't it?
It is.
To give a job description? I'm still wondering. Let's go to Carlos De Silva. One-minute job description.
It is tough to give the description in one language. Now, imagine giving that out in three languages out there. I believe in what county commissioners does, it's a fabulous job. But I really like to focus on, they provide the OPAB, the retirement plan for the municipalities. They offer the Mayflower Health Insurance Benefits for those municipalities that participates. They have the automobile purchase program at a discounted rate for the municipalities that wants to participate. A great program. A portion of that goes back to the commissioners. They do offer the 4-H program, which is a great program that most people are familiar with. They do have the parking fee processing available for the municipalities, and they are also available to come up with programs, such as the one I'm going to come up with, which is an internship program that's a win-win for the students, for the colleges, and most importantly, for the local businesses.
Okay. Thank you, Carlos. One-minute job description of county commissioners. Jack Reardon.
Thank you. The job description of the county commissioners is statutorily defined by the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They are the executive, we are the, the commissioners are the executive branch of county government. Their function and role is to lead by example and lead the county. And what do I mean by that? The towns obviously cannot perform certain functions by themselves, and in an aggregated demand, the county is able to perform certain functions, and has, over the history of the last couple of years, performed functions that the towns were not able to perform by themselves. Let me give you an example. Years ago, the county ran the court system, and the county was responsible for paving most of the roads. Obviously, we don't do those anymore, but that's a case in point. The county 4-H is a great program that the towns could not perform individually, that the county can perform. So the job description is to look and see what functions can more efficiently and in a business manner be performed better than a town could individually.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was Jack Reardon. Questions, Kevin Tachi?
How important is the county and the county commissioners' relationship with its memberships with different towns? I ask this because I believe that the county and the town of Plymouth don't have the greatest relationships. I don't even know if they're on speaking terms. Are you aware of the relationships? And if so, what can you do to improve your relationships with each community, all 27 communities? And we will start with Jack.
I believe that there needs to be a better relation, not just with the commissioners, but with the Advisory Board. Recently, with the CARES Act, although the opinion was they were not required, there was no harm in voting either for or against or being heard by the Advisory Board members on the CARES Act. There was no vote. There was a legal opinion that it was not required, but what would be the harm of that? I believe that one of the first things that should be done is you need to establish a better relationship with the town of Plymouth, as you mentioned. It's one of the largest communities in the county, and that can be simply day-to-day conversations. We might not agree on everything, and we might agree on a lot of things, but certainly it starts with just establishing meetings. It could be informal meetings, establishing a relationship, and if there will flow, the better relationship.
Round the same question, please.
With regard to the communication, if there's a communication gap, the job is to bridge that communication gap and enhance interaction from each of the communities. And with regard to something that my colleague said about the Advisory Board, I was at that meeting. The Advisory Board did have a comment. Every single member of the board was afforded an opportunity by me to have their say in terms of whether or not they thought the county should take that money. The commissioners were there at the meeting. They received that information, and they took not only mine, but many other people's comments and suggestions in terms of auditing, accountability, and timing into account for the COVID reimbursement funds. Moreover, just as a closing, I'm getting the green, is that I really think if you work together to pool resources, you're always gonna have a better result, and that's part of the role.
Carlos, same question.
I'm a relationship builder. That's what I have done all my life. I am a contract negotiator by trade. By theory, I went to college for that, and that's one of the things I truly believe is one of my strengths. I truly believe that what did happen at the topic of a conversation concerning the $90 million, the chairman of the advisory did discourage the conversation by bringing right forward right from the beginning that they did not have an opinion in it. I think you had to be more open-minded and allowed for a broader conversation while you're getting, you know, already communication from the governor's office, from the mayor of Brockton, also leaders in Halifax, Plymouth, and elsewhere. I myself called on you guys publicly for you to turn in the money to the state, because I truly believe that they would, they already have the skills. Now, you have the money, so I'm not gonna be against. I hope to be a commissioner, and I wanna work, I want it to be successful. But the truth of the matter is that you guys are creating a hostile entity, and that then it should be ended.
Mr. Hanley, same question. Relationships, town of Plymouth.
You have one minute.
I think that is an old, you know, something that was eight years ago. Since then, I can attest that we know our communities better than even the state. So I take exception with the previous gentleman's comments about us and the CARES Act. We know our communities. We administer grants. We made that argument to the governor that we wanted to make many hands make for light work. If you can understand the undertaking of the governor in trying to administer the CARES Act for the whole state, we have a very educated workforce down here, and we've been able to take the $90 million and distribute it very fairly to our member communities in record time. I challenge anyone, if you just Google Plymouth County CARES Act and see the transition from, as Mr. De Silva said, all of the negativity on our abilities till now, and what we've done with the money. We've won people over, and that's just a, look it up for yourself, folks, right on Google.
I just want to jump ahead here. I want to ask you each a follow-up question. Let's go to the rumor mill, speaking of the CARES Act. The rumor that's circulating through some news departments is that you guys ticked off the governor's office so much that there might be a good chance that Plymouth County gets dissolved. might be a good chance that Plymouth County gets dissolved. Any truths to that rumor, Mr. Hanley?
I can't verify that. I mean, I can just tell you it's a performance.
Are you hearing that rumor?
Yeah, there was a threat of that, you know. Let me just tell you, it was not an easy thing to do and take the CARES Act. We were highly criticized. And we knew down at the county with the team assembled that we could administer this program. We have the best treasurer in the Commonwealth. He's the only certified county treasurer in the Commonwealth. And the team that we have between the commissioners and our staff, we have put together a program that is a national model, that people from other states are calling us and asking us, how are we doing it? And it's because of an abundance of caution. When you look at how we received the funds, we had the A and F secretary openly, you know, campaigning against us to receive that money, said we weren't qualified to do it. And I challenge anyone in the room to ask the member communities what has happened with that whole program and how we have distributed the funds. Out of an abundance of caution, we took the comments of the A and F secretary, and we hired outside counsel, outside accounting, outside auditing for oversight purposes.
Thank you. I just want to ask the other folks that are here, just thirty seconds. Have you heard that same rumor that I did, that they want to dissolve the county because of what happened with the CARES Act? That that may happen. Jack Reardon, thirty seconds.
I have not heard about conjecture, speculation, and surmise of that rumor.
Okay.
I have not heard. You're the first person to mention that.
Okay. Carlos De Silva, have you heard that rumor?
I have not heard. What I did hear beforehand is that there was a concern that if the Plymouth County did keep the money, that the twenty-seven municipalities should not be looking for additional money. Now, we all know that the governor, the state is distributing the money to the other municipalities based on a two-hundred-twenty-five-dollar pay student. In that manner, the towns would receive more money. But now, you know, the commissioners have enhanced the program. They have a three-phase step, and hopefully, the communities will get the duly amount allocated to them.
What about you, Mike Bradley? Have you heard that rumor too about possibly dissolving the county?
I haven't heard any of that rumor recently. I can tell you that it was a difficult decision from the commissioners, who I communicated with greatly during this process. I think they made the right decision. They put in the right format to make everybody accountable. And the timeframe in which these funds are returned to the municipalities is literally saving them. Two weeks from Marshfield, from the application, one point two million dollars. And that is just unheard of. So, I think they're doing a great job. I have not heard of that rumor recently. I did hear it in two thousand and ten.
Okay. All right. Let's jump ahead to Charles Mathewson here.
Is everyone comfortable? We've gotten to know one another a little bit here, so now some globe off-taking will occur.
Uh-oh.
Jack, I'm going to concentrate first with you, and then I think Christine has some other questions. As I remember, you were not happy when the advisory committee let commissioners pay as much as they could in two thousand and ten. And then you decided not to run for reelection very quickly, in just like thirty seconds. Are those two related?
I have an article here from the newspaper. In fact, when we had to make budget cuts, I was the one that led the way. It was quoted in the paper, "To cut our own salaries, lead the way, and not cut the salaries of the rank and file for us." Recorded in the Gatehouse News multiple occasions. I'll be happy to show that to you. It's in here. It was just the opposite. We needed to lead by example. I proposed that we cut our own salaries before we cut and burdened the workers in the county.
Okay. You say now that you're in favor, you were at the time in favor of moving the sheriff's department into the state. When did that happen?
The date, the actual transfer?
Yeah.
I believe it's.
January first, two thousand and ten.
Yeah. So, about that time, yes.
But in March, three months later?
Mm-hmm.
You told WCVB, this station, and the Patriot Ledger that you were in favor of initiating the move of the sheriff's department?
Of course, yes, I was. And Senator Murray was instrumental in seeing that accomplished, transferring the county out of the, from the sheriff's department, out of the county to the state. It was a function that the county commissioners had no specialization in.
Yeah, but that was three months after it actually happened.
Well, I was involved with that from the beginning, to see that happen. And I was for that. So, I don't get your point. From the beginning, when that happened, I was for that, and always have been.
And you've recently said that that's what you actually meant. Rather than dissolve the county, you meant just to move the sheriff's department.
Actually, let me just refine that. I believe that the sheriff's department should have been transferred, and it is the right thing to do. It was the best business practices, and it was solid business practice. I also believe, and I'll say it, my position then is the position now, okay? When, back then, we had a total lack of ethics, people accepting political contributions from people that do business with the county. We didn't have a code of ethics. We had no bid contracts. And I remain the same. If the county is so infested back then, and you can't correct it, then you got to look to the state and say, can they better perform the functions?
So, were you in favor of dissolving the county in two thousand and ten or not?
If we were unable, unable to make these corrections, such as transfer the sheriff's department to the state, if we had been unable to do that, then the county would not have been viable at that time. If, at that time, the other things that we did was build a new registry of deeds, provided a state-of-the-art registry of deeds to the people of the Commonwealth. We also, I led the way at that time to preserve the county farm, which is a very difficult task and protected from commercial development. My position remains the same, okay? If you're not going to perform it efficiently and do it better, which the county needs to do, then you got to look and say, hey, the county maybe shouldn't be performing these functions, and they should be performed by the state.
Madam moderator, I yield the floor to you.
Okay. Here's, here comes my questions that I'd have to know the answer to. Let's stick with Jack Reardon, why not? Term limits. You and I had a long discussion about this the last time you were in this office, and you said you served, and that was it, and you weren't going to, you were done. But now you're back. Have you changed your mind about term limits?
No, I think that if you're in office, then you should get out and give somebody a turn. And I said at the time I was going to run for three terms and get out, and I did do that at the time, and you're a witness to that.
Yes, I am. Okay, I was just wondering.
And so, I kept my promise, and I did. I ran three terms, and I believe you should not be a lifelong elected official. If you want to go in and get out, that's fine, but it gives people an opportunity to vote for somebody else.
Okay. Kevin, you want to jump in there while he's on the hot seat?
So, if you, you served for three terms, then why are you back?
Like I said, a couple things. Number one, clean water is very important in the county. It needs to be addressed. It's not being addressed. Number two, county commissioners needs a code of ethics. When I was there, we voted for one. It was never revoked. Number three, transparency. County commissioners haven't for eight years. Audio or video recorded their meetings. The people have a right to know. I want these changes. I think these changes are in the best interests of the public, and they're good government.
Are people able to attend the county commissioner meetings?
One hundred percent.
All right. So, then that would be, video recording, that's good, but just because they're not video recording. If they're doing a meeting in secret, then that would be one thing. But if you could attend the meetings, then you would have open transparency, wouldn't you?
Every other public entity, school committee, selectmen's, planning board, video records their meetings or audios them. They don't do that.
I would love to have a packed TV down there doing, in fact, if I get reelected, that'll be the first order of business.
You could sign out a camera, you know. I'm sure if you talk to Dan or somebody down there.
I'm not that good. I'd have to have my kids come in, my IT department.
So, I would, I would ask you in regards to the last term, let me ask you in regards to the county farm. How did you feel that whole situation went in regards to having an ongoing dispute with the sheriff's department?
Honest to God, that was a, you know, something that the media created or folks that had no understanding. We were in constant contact with the sheriff's department over the farm. In fact, it was a seven-year contact because there was no insurance on the farm. When the county was run by the sheriff as a county entity, it had insurance. But it had not had insurance when the sheriff's department went to the state. So, our insurance company said, you need to get insurance on that, and the way to do that is to get a lease. So, the history is there. You can get all the public records on our conversations with the sheriff's department. I can just say, it was amicably settled. There's sufficient insurance in place. There was a lease mandated by law to get insurance, and we worked it out. Unfortunately, people politicized that process and made it a fake issue. It really was. There was never any threat to the farm or its integrity. Jack himself just admitted. He worked hard to, to preserve. They took three hundred thousand from the town of Plymouth to preserve that, and it was never in jeopardy at all.
Mike, I ask you, being the head of. Well, we're, if we're going by candidate.
Okay. Now, we're breaking format here, but.
Yeah, we are. I know that.
Okay. Quickly, please.
Greg, where do you live?
Seventy-nine Pearl Street, Plymouth, Mass.
Yeah. In your eight years on the board, have you ever resided outside of Plymouth County?
Have I ever resided outside of Plymouth County? No.
We hear rumors that you were living for a while in Quincy, for a while in Dorchester. You had some unfortunate personal events in your life. It's not true that you were living in Quincy or Dorchester?
No, my residence is seventy-nine Pearl Street, Plymouth, Mass. And yes, you're right. I have had a lot of personal things happen. But I challenge anyone to question my integrity on, as to where I live. I've lived in Plymouth due to a divorce, if you want to know the truth, living with my brother. I've got children in college. Their needs come first. So, if anyone wants to go down that route, I'm more than welcome to go down that route. I have a voting history. I have a tax history. You can, my, it's open to anyone who wants it, and I kind of resent the fact that that be brought up in this forum. But since you asked a question, I asked the answer the way I felt.
Well, the rumors are out there. Our task is clarity. Okay?
Crystal?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, you're just in with Mr. Bradley.
Okay. Being the head of the advisory board, do you feel that Plymouth County, that the communities in Plymouth County are more willing to work with the county to regionalize services, or is there resistance?
I feel that most of the members in the advisory board are receptive to the regionalization of services, particularly now when we're all hurting for funding. It makes more sense now than ever. So, I think they've been very receptive and also very vocal at times what they agree with and what they don't agree with. These are good meetings where a representative from each community is given all the time they want to talk about the budget and any issues they have. And as the chair of the advisory board, I'm happy to take that information, not only at those meetings, but also in my meetings with the commissioners, to make sure that they get full representation from the county commissioners. And that has happened.
Do you have a question for?
Did you want to ask Carlos?
Question for Mr. Bradley.
Yeah, I did. My question is, could you please explain your role in the Thornton Law Firm issue with your brother, former Hingham State Representative Garrett Bradley? And do you believe you have any possible legal exposure?
So, my role is very simple in that case. I was hired to do a job. I had a financial agreement. I did the work, and I got paid. And nobody's disputing that. And no, I have no concern about any legal exposure, because I did everything that was required of me, and I did it honestly and ethically.
Okay. Because I was just looking in the legal recap. I just want to make sure I have the correct information. It was said that you are usually, this was in the legal newsletter, normally a fifty-three-dollar-an-hour public defender, but you were making five hundred dollars an hour in the state street case. Is that correct?
So, that's misconstrued. Let me, so as part of my practice, I do so work for the Plymouth, excuse me, the Norfolk County Bar Advocates. That rate is fifty-three dollars an hour. There is a significant private practice that makes a whole lot more money than that. And all that information was made available, however they choose to write those aspects. And yes, I did charge five hundred dollars an hour for work that was contingent in nature and work that, if they never settled the case, I would have never been paid for. So, that rate was fair. It was agreed upon. I did the work, and I got paid.
Okay. So, no, no other indictments, anything like that coming down?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. All right. Kevin, back to you.
Carlos, my question to you is, Mr. Hanley had brought up earlier as to what the return is that the county gets. I believe it was ten percent. I think we're talking, Mr. Pallada, he was mentioning it. If you are elected, what's your, what's your duty as far as lobbying the state for a larger portion of the buy?
Thank you for that question. But I would love for the other candidates to also respond term limit question, if you don't mind. I mentioned a few minutes ago that I took the full six, out of seven, the school committee members to the State House to lobby for money for foster school. And we, first time ever, the treasurer said that a school committee member requests to meet with her. That was the third time that we're applying for MSBA money. I'm glad that we did that. I truly believe that had a huge impact in us getting the money. Yes, I would be lobbying all my friends on the State House, not just the Democrats, the Republicans, the governor, everyone, to change that formula. It's fair, and it's about time that we make that changes. I think it's doable. I really believe if you really lobby with, you know, put your time to it, right? You have to invest your time into it. You cannot just show up when is election year. So, yes, I would be lobbying my friends at the state and federal level to change the formula.
Well, what would you do differently than, I've had many conversations with Mr. Hanley and Ms. Wright, Mr. Pallada, and they've talked about, over the past few years, lobbying up at the State House, trying to get more money. What are you going to do differently than what they've done?
I have to really look into see what they have done. I tell you that I have a, you know, a different way of negotiating. I have ways of addressing people on a different level. And I believe that if you do that, but you just don't do when is election year. You be consistent, you know, asking, you know, the legislatures and holding them accountable too. I mean, you know, listen, they have to be elected every two years. If you're not going to support something that we truly believe that's going to work for the benefit of the twenty-seven municipalities, not just for my town, but for the twenty-seven municipalities, then I am going to work against you. And even if I have to go against you, if you belong to my political party. That is when you really truly have to go out here and represent the twenty-seven municipalities with all your powers. And forget about being reelected or anything else, but you have to do the work. If you were elected to help the twenty-seven municipalities, let's go at it. Let's, let's hold the politicians accountable.
Let's go to our lightning round. And the lightning round is, of course, the questions we ask. It's either a yes or no answer, or one or two sentences. And my first question is going to be about the county dredging program. Two sentences. Is it dead in the water or not? Let's start with you, Jack Reardon.
I agree with the inspector general's report. When they looked at it, there was no county dredge. It was an excavator. It, no captain, no barge, and never performed any function of dredging in the county.
Two sentences. Okay. Two sentences. The county dredging program, dead in the water or not?
The inspector general said so. They misused taxpayers' money. Hingham went along a year and a half ago, applied for one point five million dollars. We got the money. There is money out there.
Just two sentences.
You can do it.
Thank, I know it's tough. Greg Hanley, dredging program.
It's not dead in the water. It's a successful program on a small scale. That was a project that was given to us by a group of reps that wanted an agency to adopt it. We adopted it, and it's underfunded.
It's tough doing two sentences.
That's true. I'm sorry.
Mike Bradley, dead in the water or not, the county dredging program?
Absolutely not dead in the water. We have the equipment. We have the resources to enhance it, and we should be looking into it, because every coastal community needs dredging.
Okay. Kevin Tachi, lightning round questions.
Should the, should the county sell off anymore, whether it's properties or buildings, in order to reduce its debt?
Yes or no?
Absolutely not. And it was the first order of business of this commission to abandon that practice. It no longer exists.
Okay. Same question, Carlos De Silva.
Not only that, no, but also make sure that we pay attention to the properties that we have, that we don't disrupt the environment, such as Woodlot and the county farms.
Same question, Mike Bradley.
Absolutely not. We need to take a look at those properties, enhance the revenue from those properties.
Same question, Jack Reardon.
Absolutely not.
All right. Right to the point. Charlie Mathewson, question?
So, all four of you, what's your favorite spot in the county? Like, you could say Wallaston Beach, or Blue Hills, or?
W A T D. Let's start with you, Mike Bradley.
I love the Brent Rock area.
Okay. Greg Hanley.
I love the county.
Okay. Carlos De Silva?
I, for some reason, love Baton Beach in Hingham.
Okay. Jack Reardon.
Rexham Beach in Marshfield.
Okay. Kevin Tachi, another lightning round question.
Do you believe in term limits?
Do you believe in term limits?
Yes or no?
Yes or no? Jack Reardon.
Yes.
Carlos De Silva?
Yes.
Okay.
It's only yes or no.
It's only yes or no. Greg Hanley, term limits, okay? Mike Bradley?
Yes.
Okay. Charlie, another lightning round question?
What program, just one program, would you expand? Jack Reardon?
I briefly mentioned that earlier. Existing program is your question, though?
Mm-hmm.
It would be the 4-H program.
Carlos De Silva?
Dredging, I believe, you know, through the right process. And Mr. Bradley said that we have, you know, the other equipment. We have one excavator, and it's sitting on a warehouse in Kingston for four years, utilized by two towns outside of the municipality. So, dredging, I believe, with the right person in place.
Lightning, lightning, quick.
We can do it.
Forty-H is already being expanded upon, and I'm proud to be a part of it. We've got a hundred and fifty thousand from Senator Patrick O'Connor in supplemental budget. We've got $150,000 from Senator Patrick O'Connor's supplemental budget to expand the greenhouse opportunity down at the county farm.
The commissioners have made an effort to create a joint public use training facility in the past, and the effort to make that facility a reality needs to continue, because every police and fire department would benefit from it in the community.
This is my tree falls in the wood question. If Plymouth County government disappeared tomorrow, would anybody notice? Mr. Bradley?
Yes or no?
I think that each, just yes or no?
Yes, because we're going to go to closing statements.
Yes, they would notice.
Of course they'd notice.
Not much.
Thank you, Mr. Silva.
Yes, especially the children use 4-H.
Okay. All right, let's go to closing statements now. We're going to reverse the order that we opened in, so we're going to start with Mike Bradley, then go to Jack Reardon, then Greg Hanley, and then Carlos De Silva, and closing statements are one minute, please.
Again, I want to thank WATD and my colleagues for being here today. I think we've hit on some of the issues that affect county government. Some of the things that I want to do is increase revenue from existing sources, so we can increase what we do for all of our member communities. Just a few, some of the things are support our infrastructure, unions, healthcare, veteran services. And just in closing, it's important to remember during these impossibly difficult times that we're all in this together. We need to join our communities towards a common goal. The pooling of resources and efforts will keep the county headed in the right direction. We can't do it alone, we need your help. Please vote September 1st.
Thank you, that was Mike Bradley. Jack Reardon, closing statement.
Thank you very much. I'm Jack Reardon, running for county government, and I say I'm the good government candidate. I have three proposals for county government. Number one, transparency. I believe that the county commissioners should video and audio record their meetings. Number two, county commissioners should revoke a code of ethics for themselves, they should not accept political contributions for anyone that does business with the county. Number three, aquifers in Plymouth County and clean water. This should be a paramount concern for the county commissioners, it should be immediately moved forward with this program to address the issues of coordinated clean water throughout the county. And preservation of the woodlot in Plymouth.
Thank you very much. That was Jack Reardon. Now let's go to Greg Hanley for your closing statement.
Thank you to WATD and the panel, and I want to thank my opponents, very collegial debate discussion. I appreciate the fact that we're trying to all solve the problems of county government, and some do it better than others. I'm proud of my record. I would love, Kevin, to come in and sit down and talk to you and expand upon the things that you only have one minute to talk about. I would love to talk about my record in the last eight years as the county commissioner. As I said, $64 million was a debt obligation, it is now down to $17 million, it's roughly $2 million per community. Imagine if you had to come up with that money now. When you look at what I inherited, the first four years was cleaning up the mess of the previous administration. 16 audits were not performed, we couldn't borrow a dime, but I'll expand upon that when given the opportunity. I really do appreciate the fact that these gentlemen have stepped up to serve publicly. I think everyone has something, contribute some more than others. I look forward to September 1st, and I ask the listeners of WATD to vote for Greg Hanley with one of your two votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and now let's go to Carlos De Silva for your closing statement.
I'm glad that Mr. Reardon actually endorsed my plan of being transparent and videotaping, publicizing the meetings, and broadcasting on the 27 municipalities. I wanted to truly bring more youth and engage them on county government through the internship program. It's doable. I'm running to represent all citizens of Plymouth County regardless of political affiliation. I truly believe that with my listening skills and work ethics, I can be, I can most definitely be an asset to all municipalities. I pledge to work with all officials in our municipalities to ensure that we focus on these three areas that I mentioned, and we most definitely can identify untapped grant revenues to help senior citizens and the youth, and it will be better for us. So with that, I ask you for your vote on or before September 1st. If you want to learn more about me, go to my website, carlosdesilva.org. Thank you.